Okay, so I think we're bringing this meeting back to the regular meeting after coming out of executive session. And I forget, Amy, do we vote on that?
You do need a motion to come out of executive session.
A motion to come out of executive session. So can I get a motion to come out? All right. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Great. All right. So we are here, welcome, for the regular meeting of December 5th, 2022. And we've already called in the roll. And I think we've got probably a few announcements. Yes. Hosway? I mean, you know, I've always got a few, but yeah.
Are you doing the tree lighting?
You can go for it.
Okay, all right. So just want to thank all of our community partners, the fire department, the chamber, the Royal House Choir, the high school, all these wonderful groups that make sure that we had a very successful tree lighting ceremony. Also want to thank our public works team and our public safety team because they did a great job putting on amazing characters, the elf, the Grinch. So wonderful team, wonderful program. So it was a great success. And Brian, thanks for having the remarks and yeah, for the team for joining us. Other announcements, we are moving forward with New Year's Eve. So there'll be more activities to plan. We need to reach out to all the organizers, but I think we're going to have New Year's Eve this year.
Excellent.
And New Year's Eve, December 31st, midnight, and downtown.
All right, yes. Disco ball and all the works. So, okay, so I, yeah, I think you did a great job of, yeah, it was once again an amazing event. And Chief Burge looked awesome. So I've got to say, our Grinch every time like is amazing. And it was nice to see Santa in the mix. So I have again heard that we need to speak into the mics. And in particular, I heard that Hosway and Kevin need to, yes, so this was, this was what I heard from somebody that was listening into our last, yes, yes. So, and I know Lacy's been trying to like give us more signals about that. Yes, the sparkly bag. So everybody speak into the mics because I know a lot of people want to hear what we've got to say. Also, was very happy to hear that the, the audit was released from the state. So despite some of our trials and tribulations, it was made very clear that we had a clean audit and really happy about all the work that went into that. Yeah, I'm going to save that one for a minute. Wanted to thank Gavin and Chief Burge for a very productive public safety work session. Really appreciated that. And for those that were not able to attend, that is on our YouTube site. We had a meeting about our Walnut Street building, the former building that the school administration has been using, was very productive. One of the things that came up, and I know Emily had been part of this discussion early on, was an entrepreneur center for the village. We think there are better locations for that. So we're looking at some other options, but I wanted to let council know that that meeting happened. And Mary Ann and Hosway and I also had a great meeting with the Combsa Land Trust about Sutton Farm and some other opportunities. Municipal broadband is happening, right?
Yes.
I thought you were going to say something about that.
I, yes, you know, we forgot, we forgot last meeting. We have now what is two customers that are live. So we have several other connections that have happened since last week, but the equipment isn't fully provisioned, meaning traffic going back and forth. But yes, we have our live customers.
Sweet, sweet. And, yeah, I did want to remind everyone that we have our second tax entity joint meeting this Wednesday, December 7th at 6:00 PM. It's going to be here this time. So that's with the school board, with township trustees, and with village council. Lots of important topics to talk about. There also was something that came up, I'm not sure everyone got this from Tony Dosick about, I think maybe I did share it, about the livable equitable Yellow Springs initiative. And I guess I did want to see, is anyone interested in being that liaison? It was offered to me, but if somebody else has a passion.
This is in addition to my current involvement with inclusive resilient Yellow Springs?
So it seems like you'd be the right liaison, right?
Seems like it.
Okay, all right.
Did you hear that, Lacy?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So Kevin, we got you in the mix. And, yeah, all right. So my last two things. Number one, I wanted to say happy birthday to our esteemed Vice President, Kevin Stokes. Yep, I think there's a card as well that, yeah, so, yep. This is actually the day, I think. So, yes, all right. So see?
Happy birthday.
That's right.
December 5th, 1958.
Wow.
A day that will live. Thank you for the birthday wishes. Thank you for the card and the gifts. It's really special. And yes, I am 64 years old. And this is where everyone says, you don't look that old. But you don't have to.
Do they?
I shaved all the gray off, so I think I'm good. But thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate this. Thank you. So kind.
Yeah. And last, I just wanted to recognize a great loss to the community, Julia Reichert. You know, some of the things that I think many people know about Julia was she was considered to be the godmother of independent film, as well as, you know, I think it was in the paper, the curator of Midwestern stories. I know that I, my office was right next to Julian Stevens' house, and I got to see them every day. And so I know there's been a lot of recognition of all the great work that she did. And I just wanted to recognize how great a person she is, and her legacy will live on. And so with that, let's go ahead and move into our consent agenda. And so I think first of all, we've got the minutes from our last meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the November 21st, 2022 regular session.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And second, the credit card statement that we do monthly. I guess first of all, are there any questions or comments about that credit card statement for November? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. Next is a review of the agenda. And so one of the things I would like to recommend is that we remove ordinance 202239. We got some indication that there's a little bit more work to be done, and that that also needs to, I think, restart, given that there are some different requirements that have been brought up by council. So any problems with that?
None.
Okay. And I think, yeah, I don't have to ask for any motions to read in by title only. So anything else on the agenda? Yeah?
Can we just add one minute on a public safety work session follow up?
Yes. Okay, so we'll do that under Old Business. Anything else? Okay. If not, then I believe, Kevin, if you could review the petitions and communications?
I will. Thank you very much, Brian. So the clerk has received and has filed a letter from the Golden Kelly household regarding noise enforcement. Also, a letter from Holly Keel, and forgive me if I haven't pronounced that name properly, regarding solid waste and the education component that we talked about. Just wondering why we couldn't use what was already available and hoping that we get going on that soon. And also a letter from Barbara Mann, complimenting the work that's been done on sidewalks. And that's what we have for petitions communications. Thank you.
Okay. Did you have something, Gab?
Yeah. Is this an appropriate time? I was just interested in the answer to the question around the noise ordinance enforcement. Is it, is it not enforced, like where?
Yes. It's in, it's in effect.
It's in effect.
Okay.
Was that the question?
Yeah, it's the question. I mean, the letter makes it sound like it wasn't, that it was said that it wasn't acting. So if I'm not, I guess I won't get into the details, but just so we're all clear, the noise ordinance is in effect.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And the reason that we went through that, significant discussion was to make sure that it was enforceable. So, yeah, which means that, you know, I guess in particular, when there is an issue, that does mean following up with the PD. We'll use a variety of tools, which can include a decibel device on a phone and everything else. But I think ultimately the noise ordinance is about, you know, what seems problematic for the public. So.
I think another note to make on this letter is there was a, there's a comment in the letter about the village authorizing the brewery to play live music in the outdoor space. That process went, or that request went through the planning commission, a conditional hearing process, and that is an approved use of their business activities. So there, we haven't made any moves to prohibit that activity. They were given permission to do that. I think that at times is confused with what is outdoor folks playing music outdoors with amplified equipment, and we're not regulating that activity. So what the brewery is able to do, have outdoor music performers, they're able to do that.
Right.
As long as it doesn't affect noise ordinance as is enforced by the Department Chief of Police.
But that being said, and it was pointed out when we did talk about busking, that the noise ordinance covers that activity as well. Okay. So let's go ahead and move into legislation then. And we're going to pick up with the first reading of ordinance 202241, which.
So I have a question about that, which is just generally speaking, do you want to put that ordinance last because you've got a number of resolutions, which I don't think will take as long as the budget? And there are some folks here, well, there are some folks here for the resolution.
Are we allowed to move an ordinance to the end?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm okay with that. Not hearing any objections. Okay, so let's go ahead and do Resolution 202270, title only.
All right, this is approving a preliminary plan for Millworks PUD.
Okay, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Denise Swinger?
Hi. So everybody's received the information. I'm here representing Planning Commission tonight. They are recommending approval of this preliminary PUD. This is not how we typically do this tonight. Normally, you are passing this by ordinance, and you're actually going through the rezoning process. However, this was already rezoned in 2019. For those of you who are on council then, remember that. And there was quite an ambitious plan, which was including some residential housing on the property, et cetera. The property owner, I contacted her because that is a PUD with no underlying zoning. So I was forced to only be able to do I-1 uses. And if you know, from the 2010 comp plan, as well as the 2020, there has been conversations around the idea of expanding the central business district, but only to the north, which would encompass Millworks. Staff believes that this is a good solution by making it a PUD, because to ask the property owner today, would you want B1 zoning, they would probably say no, because they want to keep that industrial use as well. And I think that by using the PUD and having the I-1 as the underlying zoning, as well as B2 with a few of the B1 uses that she's requested, it gives a nice mix for that whole use of that property. I might even go back at some point and see if a couple of the other properties south of that might want to do a PUD as well, because they're kind of still stuck in the I-1 zoning. And that may not be the best zoning for them, especially with what the market eatery is getting ready to do. Excuse me. So in the end, I think that Planning Commission recognized the fact that this would be, this would complement the uses that are in B1. So if you have any questions about that, you can ask me. I do have Allison here tonight to give a very brief slide presentation of the improvements that she's already made, which are significant. If you don't have any questions for me right now, I can go ahead and let her do this, and I can come back to you.
Great.
Okay.
Any questions for Denise at this point?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Allison, come on up.
Hello, I'm, sorry, I'm Allison. I'm a partner at APR Investments, and we own Millworks Business Park. As Denise explained, I'm here to fix an issue, a zoning issue that I inherited from the previous owners. We are currently operating with an underlying industrial I-1 zoning, which is the historic use of the property. I'll wait for the slides to catch up.
I don't have a clicker, so just tell me when to change slides.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Yeah, no.
Many residents will remember when it was once Dewine Seeds Company. Next. This PUD proposal will keep the I-1 designation to protect our current and future industrial tenants, while also adding B2 zoning to welcome a wider variety of businesses to our complex. Since purchasing the property last year, we have invested over $200,000 in capital improvements. These were done with the intention of making the property more accessible, visible, and safe. The largest project was renovating our parking lot. We paved about 40,000 square feet, which created 50% more parking spaces. With this project, we expanded our stormwater system, which included adding 140 linear feet of French drains, multiple catch basins, and two gravel detention basins that ensures as much water as possible is being absorbed on site. We also built a walking path. Next one. Which now allows direct access to our parking lot from the bike trail. We have added directional signs, lighting, bike racks, and artwork to make this entrance more inviting. Other improvements include painting buildings. Go to the next one. That was a big one. Repairing masonry, adding a new monument sign. I think there's a slide for that. Yep. Repairing roofs. We just replaced 26 skylights, which made a huge difference. Lots of landscaping. That's me. Half a dozen new metal doors and renovating the shared restrooms, which we now open for community events like Porch Fest and Street Fair. You can never have enough clean restrooms on those days. This PUD application is particularly timely with Envireflight set to leave at the end of the month. They are vacating 25,000 square feet spread between five buildings. Even though I plan to lease most of these buildings to industrial users, I would appreciate the flexibility to provide space to a wider array of business. We do have the office pre-leased to a wonderful local nonprofit. I have been given permission to share that Home Inc. is moving to Millworks. We're very excited to have them, and we've committed to donating a portion of their space in perpetuity.
Right.
This PUD is also in line, next one, yeah, with existing village plans. It was noted in both the 2010 and 2020 comprehensive land use plan, so the village would like to see the central business district expanded north to include Millworks. In conclusion, Millworks has changed in the last decade from a purely industrial complex to a multifaceted business park, which is visited by the public on a daily basis. As new owners, we have prioritized improvements and encourage the property be utilized more as a community asset. I ask you to allow me to continue the momentum of providing space for more local businesses. Do you have any questions for me?
So actually, I'm curious, artist work, live space, still like, is that still?
No, I have no interest in having any sort of residential, but artist studios, I'm open. One of our buildings, the blue building that you saw, Richard Lapides and Michael Jones are in there. So ceramics and then sculpture.
And what about, there was also a consideration around some kind of open market. Is that something that you're thinking about, or?
Um, we talked about doing like a food truck rally, or maybe the farmer's market, but I think that's, you know, it has a nice home here.
Yep.
But if, like a backup space, you know, we could host that.
Sweet. Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
Allison, sorry, right here. Me, birthday boy. Yeah, it's all about me.
I'm sad too.
The public, I didn't want to call them public restrooms, but the restrooms that you said you'd make available to the public during special events. I mean, how, you have a means where you can control that, where on any odd day, you don't have folks going in there, if that's the plan?
Yeah, so that's in a hallway, and it's a locked door, it just automatically locks. And we have signs that we direct people that way, and I pay a lady to clean and stock those when it's open to the public.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sounds good. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, looks amazing. Thanks, Allison. All right. Denise, anything else?
Nope. Very happy with this. I want to get this PUD to have something underlying. And what will happen, if you prove this tonight, it'll go on to, back to council, or back to Planning Commission for a final, and then we're done.
Yep. Well, I will say, I was disappointed about the hiccup, but very appreciative that it was picked up again. So, okay, so.
So if I, this, because it follows a process that is dictated by our planning and zoning code, you do, you will open a public hearing on a resolution, which we don't normally do, but it's required by the.
Okay. So then I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any comments from citizens? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And Judy, it sounds like we should also do a roll call.
Very good. Stokes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes, and I really appreciate that you're doing this.
Dever Leonard?
Yes.
Housh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Resolution 202271. And we can do that by title only.
All right, this is amending the employment agreement with Johnny Burns as Public Works Director.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Hosway?
Yes, thank you, Brian. This is to bring us in line a little closer with what benefits are made available to all other employees except contract employees in our personnel manual. Currently, all employees except contract employees are able to carry 160 hours of vacation time rollover. Johnny Burns, along with Denise Swinger and Paige, myself, we are limited to carrying over vacation time. So this is an adjustment to address some carryover vacation for these two individuals, from 40 hours to 88 hours. It was an issue of concern by the auditors earlier in the year, and there's still some unresolved items around that. But we struggle at the end of the year, as we're going into the end of the year process. And, you know, we really can't afford to have Johnny take off the end of the year. Johnny, sorry about that. So we struggle fixing in all the vacation time at the end of the year. So this will gives it a little more flexibility on scheduling vacation.
So basically, we're talking about carrying over 10 days instead of five days.
Correct. 40 hours to 80 hours, and we count them on hours.
And Hosway, you alluded to the audit process, but my, before you said that, my question was going to be, did this come up as a result of the review of the policy manual?
Yes and no, but it came up during the audit process and then the special audit, that vacation overs came, the carryover came under scrutiny and what contracts allowed. So one of the examples, or what was in reviewed at the beginning of the year when the special audit was underway, my vacation time, we didn't cash out per my contract, we carried it over, or we just used it in the following year. And so the audit process said that we need to be more explicit about how vacation is handled, being cashed out or cashed. about how vacation is handled, being cashed out or carryover, with the number of hours being so low that can be carried over with 40 hours. One way to address or solve some of this issue is allowing a greater number of carryover time from 40 to 80, which is five days to 10 days. That would help alleviate some of the, some of the, the pressure to run these hours out at the end of the year. So the two, it is, there's a, there's a bit of a disparity on how much vacation over gets carried over by regular employees, hourly employees. That number is capped at 160 hours. So there's a difference between them. But to your question, it did come up during the audit process. We're trying to fix these things. Additionally, it's a good practice to find the medium between what carryover time is allowed and ensuring that the team is able to schedule their vacation time.
Right. Well, you mentioned that yourself and Paige are also in the same boat, if you will. Should we anticipate seeing similar legislation?
I, I, yes, I think for all contract employees, this is going to become a practice where we allow more than the 40-hour vacation times. Obviously, this is something that is the authority of council to do. So I'm recommending that we, moving forward for all contract employees, that there's greater flexibility around vacation time, whether that's going to get cashed out or allow greater carryover time. But I think it'll be, one of the things that in the contract negotiations for me this year, as Brian and I were talking, we wanted to find the balance of incentivizing folks to take the vacation time, because I think we cannot agree that employees need to take vacation time. It's good to sharpen, sharpening the blade, if you will, in recharging. So we want to incentivize that as well. So looking to find the right balance.
Great. Thank you. So that alignment is why we have the next resolution, by the way. Um, yeah, I mean, just to be, you know, be clearer about what came up in the audit was that Hostway had suggested that instead of cashing out, it would be nice to be able to take this vacation. But we needed to document that. And so that's, that's what this is really about. So. Right. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So let's go ahead and do Resolution 202272. Title only again is great.
All right, this is amending the employment agreement with Denise Swinger as Planning and Zoning Inspector and Economic Development Liaison.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So I think it's the same thing, right?
Yes.
Okay. So any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Oh, yeah. So just, why aren't, why are we only doing two right now?
Those are the ones that we needed to address right away.
Okay.
Yeah, it's what certainly were, we'll work with Paige. And mine, mine has already been adjusted in June.
Okay.
And so the Michelle Robinson was addressed earlier in the, earlier in the year.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then we're going to go back to the first reading of Ordinance 202241. Judy, we can do that by title only.
This is approving the 2022 Annual Appropriations and declaring an emergency, Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I'll just clarify, the emergency piece is not, we will be doing a second reading. But the idea is that we want to bring it in as an emergency so that it can go into action right away for 2023. Okay.
And Brian, the budget ordinance has been an emergency legislation every year since I've been here, right?
Yeah. We always do it in December. That's right. Okay, so Hostway, I guess we'll let you.
So my, what I had planned on doing was going over the ordinance, which is the summary of our budget, and then do a dive on revenues. Revenues by fund, fund type, and categories. And then go into the, go into the expense budget. Summary level, detail level, and then covering the deficit. And then connect back to revenue opportunities that we've been discussing for a while. Primarily, so I'm sharing what I have planned. So I, there were a series of questions. Mary Ann has sent in 26 questions. Gavin had questions. So I want to take this time to address what are the most important things for council and guide the conversation, or what will be the most useful for you to go through this budget.
I just have a process question. I, I feel like we got so much material, you know, probably added up to about 100 pages between Friday and essentially this morning, in so many different forms. And I understand you haven't had a finance person, and Amy is, is, is new. And so I can understand why everything came at the last minute. But for me, much of it is unintelligible. And so my process question is how much time are we planning on spending tonight? Because I, my recommendation is that we have another work session so that we can have Amy a part of it, and we sit down and spend a couple hours or whatever is needed, just on the budget. And I don't know that, I don't feel prepared to do that two to three hours tonight. So that's, that's where I am with this.
Yeah, I don't think we should spend more than an hour tonight. And so maybe that's a good point to, you know, so we're at 7:36, to decide where we're at after that. I have the impression that many of the questions should be addressed by some of the higher level themes. But, um, but yeah, but I think that's a great point to, to bring up.
So what would you like me to cover in the next hour?
I can't begin to say.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just say, I'm, I'm struggling with where to begin too. Because it, I guess it felt to me, I guess where I'd ideally like to begin is where we left off in the last conversation.
Yes.
And the memo that we received seemed like it was many other things besides where we left off, maybe some things after we left off, lots of other things that I don't recall us ever talking about previously. So yeah, I'm, I'm also a little bit like, I'm trying to figure out, I mean, most notably, I guess I'd rather not wait all the way till the end to get an answer to the question of, in the memo, you're talking about there being a significant deficit.
Yes.
And we had just, I thought, worked to try to address having a significant, and at that point, it was frankly, a deficit that was almost three times smaller. You're talking about a $3 million deficit here, and the last time we had talked about a $1.2 million deficit, and then had worked it down to a few hundred thousand, I thought. So if we go on a circuitous route, if we could start there, just so I don't spend the next 20 minutes wondering how far off we really are, that would be great.
All right. So I'll, I'll, I'll pick it up where we left off the conversation at the last budget meeting, which at the time, we had that meeting here, and we were talking about the $1.2 million deficit and how we had reallocated expenses to bring the general fund deficit down to $300,000 range. Now, I made it clear at that time that we didn't eliminate expenses. We reallocated the expenses and looked at cash reserves that we had in the special revenue funds to make up the difference in the deficit that was coming out of the general fund. So that conversation, that entire conversation about the deficit had to do with general fund, general fund transfers, and how general funds move to special revenue funds, and particularly the streets department that is Fund 202, Parks and Recreation that is 204, two funds that are special revenue funds that are mostly funded through transfers out of the general fund into those funds. So that, that deficit remains the same. There was an accounting math that need, that was done to reduce the deficit out of the general fund, the 1.2 million, by using cash resources that were available to us in Funds 202 and 204, which is streets and parks and recreation. So that deficit there of 1.2, that, that was still there. That, that hasn't changed. We just reallocated where we took the cash to cover that expense. The, the deficits in other areas, if you go to page three of my memo, and I'll, and I'll bring it up, pull it up here on the, on the screen here. I try to summarize, summarize this in a, in a short table. Amy has, has, has a better idea than I have on how to, how to present this information to make it clear to council. And so I think if we do have that work session, which I welcome it, and I want us to schedule it, that we can go look at these deficits. So the, these are the definite deficits by the fund type. We have four fund types in our budget. That is the general fund revenue, special revenue, trust and agency, which you see it's a small amount because it's the Widows Fund and another small fund, the capital funds, and then the enterprise funds. The capital funds, we're looking at a, at a deficit of almost half a million dollars. The capital funds, you asked the question, Gavin, are you worried? Are you concerned about this? With the capital funds, I'm not, because we put capital funds, we set aside capital funds for the purposes of making those capital improvements, capital investments that we need. In this year's budget, the capital projects that we're planning, planning are 438,000 of sewer line realigning. If you recall, we had several conversations this year about our cost of relining sewers is going up significantly. In fact, this year, we, we added funds to our sewer relining because we wanted to leverage the pricing that had been negotiated through this year. Johnny has continued to, those conversations of sewer relining. He has made significant progress to have that price guaranteed extended into the year. Johnny, I don't know if you are ready to, no update on the, on the, on the date, but Johnny and the team and the, and the collaborative are pushing to have a price, fixed price for sewer. So we're planning $438,000 of sewer relining in, in 2023. So that makes up a significant portion of the, the capital funds. And there's a breakdown of all of the capital expenditures in your budget. So I'm not concerned about the, the amount of money that we're spending in the capital funds, because we have been putting that money aside to make the capital improvements that we need to make. All the bud, all the items that Johnny has put in the capital budget, they are essential. There are things that we could, that we can push off. Just Amy and I were talking about, Johnny, we didn't have a chance to connect with you on this, but the playgrounds, part of the, part of the capital project is to upgrade our playgrounds, playgrounds at Gawn Park. And Johnny presented two options. A more expensive option that would allow us to meet all the needs of the different ages and different uses, and a, and a cheaper option. Where there is some heartburn for me is the enterprise funds. And my heartburn is not any, anything new. Council had a presentation two meetings ago from Courtney and Associates on the deficit in our enterprise funds. We are, we have a shortfall in funding, as it is now on the operating side. The presentation included a recommendation from Courtney and Associates. And that recommendation was to increase revenues, our utility rates, to electric, sewer, and water by the numbers of 6%, 12%, 24% and up to 40% from water. So those deficits, what those recommendations are, are in line with the deficits that are in this budget. That's where I have the greatest heartburn and the worry on the enterprise funds, and particularly to enterprise funds. Mary Ann asked the question, why is, why is the, the expense in, in these enterprise funds in red? And the reason for it, Mary Ann, is because that funding level, that spending level is not supported by our revenues. So in the next, the next hearing budget, we either have to commit to raising revenue for those enterprise, or we have to make significant cuts to electric and water to make those budgets, to make that budget much more balanced.
So, do you mind?
Can I? Yes.
So this, I think, so just tell me if I'm wrong here. So the 364,000, that's the general revenue fund difference here? Is that the roughly $300,000 that we were talking about at the end of the last meeting?
Correct. And this number has gone up.
Okay, it's gone up, it's gone up a little bit. But there, so there's, that's pretty close.
Yes.
Okay. So just, first of all, if that could, if you communicate that with us, just in the memo, or in this case, like email me back and just say, hey, this, that's all that number is.
Yeah.
That would help. So then, do you recall talking to us about this overall gap previously?
The overall gap, the, in?
Like, I, I guess what I'm saying is, is that I was under the impression that we had been, we had basically been talking about the general revenue fund number.
Yes.
Right? That was the driving portion of our conversation.
Yes.
And we were concerned about this larger 1.2 number, and then bring it down to a few hundred thousand. And then this memo, I don't know how other people read it, but I read it like it's screaming at us, we have a massive deficit that's way bigger than we talked about before. And I'm, so, and now I'm getting, okay, you're saying the deficit around the general fund is what we talked about it a few times, you know, last time, but there's a bunch of other deficits. And then I'm trying to remember, when did we talk about that?
I don't know if we framed it in this context explicitly about the all-funds deficit. But we've been talking about deficit spending on capital funds and enterprise funds for multiple years. We, we've been intentional about investments. So there is an ongoing conversation that we've had about using up cash reserves on all funds. In this particular, the, we, the earliest point that we had this conversation about cash balances around, on all the funds, would have been when council approved the tax budget that we sent to the county in July. So I don't remember the exact date, but one of the documents that we present to council is in all-funds budget on a tax basis for the year. And we do that, we had to submit it to Green County in July. So we present that overall budget in the middle of the year, and then we adjust to projections that we go, as we progress through the year. This particular budget, yes, it's higher than we wanted to be. It includes items that we had not initially planned for. One of the things, if I took away the, what I took away from the last budget meeting is, council wanted to see what does a proposal from Public Works looks like in, in response to what, what Chief Burge presented. What does a proposal from Public Works Director look like to ensure that Public Works departments have the resources, both cash resources and human resources, to do the things that we expect them to do? And so this enterprise fund incorporates those recommendations. And those recommendations, in short, are the creation of new positions, which I highlighted in, in the memo, and the, the revenue and the wage enhancements for those positions. So you're going to see that cost spread across the different enterprise funds in, in this matter. Electric distribution is seeing an increase of 127,592, but which is being offset with a $50,000 reduction to professional services. Water distribution increases by 117,000. Water treatment, sewer treatment, water collections are also increases. This is.
I can't see that.
This is page two. This is page two of, of the memo. So this enterprise does include these, the, this proposal from Public Works Director. I also made it, made it, made it clear to your question, Gavin, how do we close this gap? I've presented ways that we close this gap. One is looking at the revenue, the revenue opportunities which are presented in this table. Now, you asked the question, well, I don't know the scope of these numbers. The scope of these numbers is, I'm, I took these numbers from the presentation that Courtney and Associates had. Courtney and Associates had that delta, the difference in revenue that we needed to raise. So these numbers, what essentially I've done here is I plugged in the numbers and for, for sewer and water in particular, you know, we, we can't, I, we can't raise the raise 24% in one year long. We can't do that. We got to spread that out. We cannot raise our water rates to 41% in one year. We can't do that. You know, we, we could. I won't have a job, I think. Water rates, so this is my proposal to adjust water rates over the next five years. So these numbers, I did not put the context of the revenue because they relate to a greater recommendation apart of Courtney and Associates, and it's also included in a memo, in a agenda item that's further in the council packet. There's a specific memo that has the recommendations or the slides from that presentation. So in short, where the challenge or where we need to, where I am and Amy and the team will focus on in the next two weeks to ensure we have a more balanced budget is right here. This is where our concerns are. This right here, that this, it's not structurally sound, and we need to make cuts or council commits to revenue increases that we can close the gap. I'm okay with this 364,000. What we have shown in our cash What we have shown in our cash balances and that included in your packet, the general fund is going to be above the 90 day reserve. The capital funds, because they are capital funds, we can take them down to zero because we put that money aside for these investments. The enterprise funds or our electric fund and our water fund at this spending level will be below the 90 day reserve limit. Our sewer enterprise, we can take the full 438,000 that we're proposing for sewer relining out of the sewer operating fund and still be above our 90 day reserve. So.
I'll just finish it. This makes sense. I think it's just, it's just hard because it feels like if we would have known like at least the big picture. I don't think we need every single number, but that, hey, we've got an enterprise fund deficit issue.
Yeah.
If we could have talked about that a while ago, then it felt like it, it just, it's hard seeing it in a memo the day before a meeting and trying to figure out what's going on and thinking you're trying to pass a budget. I'm totally open to thinking about these revenue questions. I just think we owe it to the public. I think we owe it to ourselves to be able to think them through all the way and get feedback and talk it through. So anyway, just, I think as we move into, we are where we are today. I'm just, I just want to make sure the feedback is clear that in the future, I really hope that we can flag some of the biggest issues. Because, yeah, anyway, you get it.
And Gavin, I'm, I'm sorry that if you feel like you're being blindsided by this. I have, from the beginning of this year, I have been raising the issue of our utility revenues are not keeping in line with what we need to spend. We worked hard to contain costs and do cost savings from 2019 since I've arrived to manage costs and may improve any efficiency we can, which led to us reducing infiltration inflows, reducing water losses. But this year, we've been talking about, we need to address utility rates. Last two years, we've been talking about reciprocal tax. I could have been perhaps more, what would be the, I don't want to say alarmist or, you know, louder about this, but these are issues that we had to grapple with for a while. I feel that I spent the majority of this year talking about, hey, at the end of the year, we need to start looking at utility rates because it's not.
Can I, can I pull this back for a minute? So this budget does not include any increases. You're going to drill down on increases later?
Correct.
In the meeting?
This budget does not include the increases. It also does not include the, the potential revenue from exercising an arbitrage opportunity on renewable energy credits. When Courtney and Associates made of their presentation, they included those revenues into their revenue projection and were counting on those. I have not included them in the budget because we included them in 2022's budget. Council did not approve the, the arbitrage opportunity of selling the renewable recs. So we have to remove them from our budget because based on actions, they're not an expected revenue source. If council wants to reconsider that, we can put in that revenue source. That's to the tune of around 150 to 168,000. It depends on market conditions. When Brian and I talked about it, for a short period, our win in solar credits could be sold on the market for $21 a rec. And so that was the highest price point that it reached in the year. We're not going to see that now this year, but we don't know what the energy market or rec market is going to be next year. I hope it goes up and there's an opportunity there. But we did not include that revenue source and it does not include rate, rate increases. The other aspect that has not been factored in, I talked about the utility overpayment. And I apologize that our, the wording of utility overpayment in our, in our accounting software isn't better. It is not an overpayment of money that is due to the, the customers. It is money that the, the administration owes to the enterprises. So briefly, what the utility overpayment is, when we have snowbirds, they leave town. They prepaid their bill ahead of time to leave a credit in the account that we then draw down from to pay electricity, water, sewer and trash. What has happened with the previous finance director, he failed to put in procedures to ensure that overpayments fund was drawn down proportional to the credits that were being utilized at the, at the customer accounts. So for example, if Brian is flying to Florida, pays his bill a month ahead and his next month is $200, when the utility department takes that credit, they're supposed to issue a payment request to the over utility, the utility overpayment account so that the finance director writes out a check for that overpayment or that money in that overpayment account to pay the, the enterprises. I'm sure Amy is going to have a, a more eloquent way of saying that, but in a nutshell, that's how, how that's supposed to happen and hasn't happened. So this does not contemplate the moving of $234,000 from the utility overpayment account to the enterprises. So that's going to increase revenue roughly. You know, we tried, what that means in terms of revenue potential for the enterprises, about half of that revenue is probably electricity and the other 25% of it and it's going to be split between water and sewer and, and solid waste. The otters did not like that rough estimate. So they're asking us to audit every utility account for credits by account by month and issue payments to the enterprises based on that auditing. So there's a lot of work to be done to get that. I spoke with Amy earlier today and she seems enthusiastic to take that on.
In quotation marks.
Okay. Mary Ann.
Well, you know, this is hard enough to do unless you're Amy maybe. And to have to do it and, and, and it's emotional. I mean, recognizing that we have these deficits, that, that's not a fun thing. And then have to do it sitting up here in front of citizens makes it even adds another thing. I mean, all these things that are being talked about right now, ideally, we would be doing it in a workshop setting where we're sitting around the table and we can have time to sort of think about it. And, and it feels very, I feel a lot of pressure. I feel very pressured. And I'm not assigning blame. I'm just saying this, that is my experience. It's very hard for me to take all of this, this in at this point.
And if there's one person that can relate to that pain, I can relate to it. Because when we're talking about cuts or we're talking about utility rates, we're affecting people.
So I, I'm not, I just really don't feel that I am, that my brain is functioning as well as it might with all this information coming in.
Well, we, Brian, if I may, well, we alluded to having another work session before the second reading of this ordinance. Did I hear that?
That's, that's what I heard Mary Ann asked for, to have a work session where we could spend more time and perhaps a more relaxed setting to go over this. I think one of the things that thrown us off, there's a few things. One, we were without a finance director. We were under special audit. So there was a different level of scrutiny than we've ever experienced. We changed the process on how we present the budget. Normally, it's a very dry process where we go for three hours at a time or two hours at a time. We go line item by line item on the budget and we do that for three sessions. We do that, the general fund, we do that capital funds and, and enterprise funds. This year, there were a lot of gold conversations and value conversations that we focused on. And I think that in part did help us address some items that we had never talked about. And so that, that process, I think, pushed us back. And I don't know that we were prepared to do those three work sections the way we did them and then to do three work sessions to go line item by line item on the budget. I would like for next year that we go line item by line item because it means that we cover everything. It's probably too much information overload for you guys as it is for us, but I think it helps to ensure that we touch on every line item in the budget.
And it's fine to say that, but I will say for the nine years that I've done the budget and we've gone line item by line item, line item, there's been no discussion, very few questions. And we've made a couple of adjustments at the end and approved the budget. So I don't feel like that's a superior way to do it. But I guess what I would like to do is use the other 30 minutes we've allocated to address other questions that have been brought up. You know, you got many questions and I, I know you guys did some work around that. But I mean, it's fine to have another work session, but I, I, I just, I will be really curious to see what, you know, the specific discussion is going to be around that. So, so anyway, but let's, instead of talking about how to talk about it, let's just try to answer some of the questions.
So I think Gavin, did I answer, did I answer the, your overarching questions on the deficits? If, if I have, I would like to, to move on to Mary Ann's questions, but I could move on. And then if you think of anything, we'll, we'll come back to it. Okay. So Mary Ann had asked about the increases in the YSPD, Public Safety Budget. My understanding out of the presentation that Chief Birch did on the $21,000 wage adjustment and the corresponding pension, I walked away out of the meeting thinking that council thought that that investment of what is $25,000, that it was worth putting in the budget as a consideration that it would, that it may cut back on our lost time. I know Paige, you had it much more eloquent way than I may said, but it'll certainly cut back burnout, cut overtime and any cost of not having those, those wages adjusted. The wage adjustment that Paige proposed brings us to the average wage in the, in the area. So it's not being above, it's not going above those wages. Johnny presented a similar issue about wages that are wages are below what the market area is paying for those wages. Johnny got a bit of in trouble. I don't know if his trouble would say, but you know, he, he, he was very transparent about the challenges that he's facing, that he's lost one lineman, replacing that individual, the possibility of losing other employees to higher paying municipalities or private sector job. Now, the private sector jobs, we know we can't compete. There are electricians out there with similar skillset that are going to make a lot more money in the private sector. What, what Johnny had proposed was a wage adjustment across all the public works teams to alleviate the, the, the pressure of folks leaving for other jobs. Additionally, I think Carmen, this was, this was your point. You recognized that the public works team was being stretched in and you thought it was important to provide the resources that they may need to do the job to take, take care of the infrastructure challenges. So, and in response to that, Johnny's proposed making the positions, creating the positions that we create. One dedicated lineman and two water personnel, water distribution personnel. The water distribution personnel particularly related to the compliance requirements for the EPA for us to identify and replace galvanized pipe and lead pipe in our village. By 2024, which is a short runway, we need to have completed a full assessment of all water lines and fixtures that are galvanized and have lead. Johnny, is that correct? So those two positions are specifically designed to help address the, the repairs that we need to make while also planning to meet that compliance by the EPA. Did I miss anything on the wages, Johnny?
So what would be helpful, and if we have a work session, to compare what we were shown at one of the work sessions with both salaries, wages, benefits and materials for public works and for YSPD? Because I'm not clear, there, we, there were some council members and there are certainly some in the community that do not want to see, who want to see decreased in YSPD, not increase. So were there any things cut? I don't, I don't know because we didn't get something compared to what was initially to what's being shown now.
Are you asking if there's anything cut in, in any of the budgets or the PD budget?
Well, in regard to the PD budget. And then I'd like to also see, given the changes for the public works of adding new employees, how that impacts decreasing contractor costs, if it does.
Yes, we did that. And, and this, and this chart right here, we identify $150,000 worth of contractor expenses that we, of work that we would bring in-house. And the electric distribution, that is pole replacements. We currently, where our staff, our current staff cannot keep up with all the pole replacements. So we hire external staff to, sorry, contractors to come in and replace those poles. Now, the focus on the pole replacements is the ones that are, that are, need to be replaced. We do an assessment on power pole conditions and there are some that are in critical condition that must be replaced. So we prioritize the severity of the pole condition. So that, that would save us about 100, sorry, 50,000. And then in streets, Johnny, identify cost savings and contractor services.
So I appreciate you pulling this out, but I'd also, if I was interested, which I am, like to actually look at the spreadsheet that shows all of the stuff in there so I can see everything. It's not, we don't have that.
You, you have those changes and these savings, these reductions have been included in the full expense detail. In the, in the budget, we have included, we have included full expense sheet down to the level of, of an item. So if you want to see how much money we're paying in advertisement across all the funds, that information is available in the full expense budget that we have included at council.
But you understand that when we read, when you get, when we get this and then we also get, I don't know how many pages there were.
66.
66 pages. And there's no, you know, sort of page number reference. And there's a, you're switching from department to department or from year to year. And you're talking about comparisons that are from what we talked about before, that we're talking about now. You understand that's hard to follow, right?
Oh, I'm sure, yes.
Okay. So just, I just want to make sure it's clear that like when we're saying like, hey, it'd be nice to see this. I could understand how one could go, but we received this at three o'clock yesterday?
The memo, the memo was just five, five pages.
The memo is the most explanatory thing that we had.
Yeah.
The budget stuff that we got, there's no context for it whatsoever. So I'm just, you just got to get, understand that what, that the challenge is, is that we have lives outside of this too.
Yes.
And, and the memos are, it's hard to put these pieces together and to be able to grasp it all.
Yes.
Okay.
And I had, you know, I had a lot more things to put in the memo there. Five pages, I was already stretching it on the content in that page. And so I understand and I'm trying to give you clear and concise information that ties in what is over 66 pages of financial data.
What, what are we thinking with regard to future arbitrage opportunities considered with regard to our renewable energy credits?
What options are out there? Well, one is driven by the market. The last two sales that we did on the, when we sold them in 2020, we got council authorization to sell them right away. We've met with the broker and we just kept an eye on it until we found the high price and we executed the price and that netted over $500,000. We did something similar when we sold them to fund the power plant and climate action. So when we get authorization from council, we watch the market to when we think it's the best price that we can get. And we have a trading desk with American Municipal Power that keeps an eye on it. So they have a good idea when it, when it's flowing. They also have relationships that they work with to know when different distributors and generators have to meet market compliance. So they have an idea of when rec buyers are going to the market. So they want to time it when there's going to be a demand for recs. And that happens throughout the year. Different suppliers have different requirements depending on whether they're in Pennsylvania, New Jersey and Maryland, which is our, where we sell recs. Ohio is part of that same grid, but Ohio has got it. It's renewable energy credit system. So they, they get sold to Maryland, New Jersey, Pennsylvania folks.
So, you know, I, I don't want to go into the weeds. I am still talking budget, but I, I would hope that we can be a little forward thinking and aggressive with respect to the, another arbitrage opportunity. Yes, you're right. We got a lot out of that. And I would submit if we just set aside our. And I would submit if we just set aside our philosophical concerns about selling renewable energy credits, that that's a source of revenue that would lessen some of the pain that we're dealing with here. And so, you know, on that note, I was going to raise a question about, well, I'll say it this way. Whether we call it affordable housing or the Affordable Housing Fund and the funds that go in there and what they can be used for, I have said before, and I don't, I'm not going to be shy about it, whether it's, again, the Affordable Housing Fund or some other fund for what we know is going to be a request from Home, Inc. And the history has proven itself, it's been proven in history over and over again, that we make minor, relatively minor investments in the efforts that Home, Inc. is going through, and we get a great deal, the village, the public gets a great deal of return on that investment. I know we're talking about making some of these bad numbers bigger, but I'm proposing a means of offsetting a lot of that. So, I just want to get that out there. You know, we've all, some of the programs, CASP, a program, the downing of the power plant, I mean, those are things that we just would not have been able to do without taking advantage of those arbitrage opportunities on the market. So, I would, again, like for us to more aggressively consider that. And, and I'm already earmarking, you know, funds for some of those funds, for what can be used for. And again, I don't know, I know the money comes from, I got, I got it tenuant in my head, but short-term, yeah, transient guest lodging, that's how the money typically goes into the Affordable Housing Fund. But, just to make sure there's no, there's no limitations on what we can do with that money once it's there.
So, on the transient guest lodging fund, that collects about $50,000 a year. That's in the general fund, so that gets used up for all the purposes of the general fund. There's also a revenue line for the affordable housing mitigation fee and that Mary Ann had a question about the Affordable Housing Fund. Now that we have approval from the state, we've incorporated the Affordable Housing Fund into the 2023 budget. We've collected $9,750 this year alone for that. Mary Ann, your question was why limit it only to 8,000? We put in that 8,000 expense because it was, it would be half of the total revenue that's projected to be collected by the end of 2023. So, our limitations come January 1st will be 9,750. We could spend more money as more money becomes available that is collected through the Affordable Housing mitigation fee. So to your point, come January, can that be increased to 9,750? Yes. And we can increase that expenditure to the full amount that it's collected, which at this point may be 16,000, whatever, 9,750 plus the $7,000 that are projected to be collected. That, that funding can be used for the purposes of furthering affordable housing. That is how council voted in the ordinance. So, anything that we can use to justify that clause is an allowable expense.
And we're able to transfer funds into their, into the.
So that one, we have to be, we have to be careful to do because the initial fund request was denied because the state auditor did not approve of a special revenue fund being primarily funded out of the general fund revenues. So.
Then in fact, there's, there's not a benefit to putting it in that fund, right? Because the general fund, we can use for anything. But, what we can do is look for other revenue sources to beef up that fund. So, but we could always pull something out of the general fund to do affordable housing.
Right.
So.
Well, just wanted to do another shot across the bow. I know the numbers don't look good. And we've talked, if we could summarize a lot of what we've been talking about and struggling with, it's been infrastructure and housing. And certainly, the bulk of that is going to be an infrastructure conversation. I just want us to consider the possibilities with respect to housing as well.
And the expenses that you're seeing in the capital funds and enterprise funds are to further our efforts to make an impact on infrastructure. So, that's all infrastructure spending.
Yep.
The, there are a couple other questions, Denise, did you?
Well, I just want to say, that's a temporary.
You better come up to the mic, since we're.
The 9,750 or whatever it is, that's a temporary source of revenue. It's not a, that's not something that's going to be growing unless you find other sources because, as you recall, that was from a, basically a moratorium that you put on any future non-operator occupied. So, once these properties sell, it's gone. Or transfer owners or rent, whatever, it's not going to be used as a transit guest lodging again unless the property owner lives there, and then there wouldn't be this $1,500 mitigation fee. So I just wanted to.
And Denise, correcting from a, did we have one non-operator occupied unit go offline this year? Did we lose an air?
I feel like we did, I can't remember off the top of my head, but yeah, I mean, that's going to happen because once the, because the transit guest lodging, those certifications are not transferable. So, I can't bring another TGL for that property unless the new owner actually is going to live in the property.
Right. Yeah, we at least got a letter that one of them got sold, but, you know.
Yeah, that's what I was recalling that.
Yep, and I know who it was, but I think, you know, it got sold to somebody that could own a house. So, it served the purpose.
So, should I continue with the questions or you have a?
I don't know, how many, how many are we going to have time for?
Well, I'm on question three out of twenty-six.
Right. Do you mind if I jump in with a? So, I'm just trying to wrap my head around where we are, big picture. So, right now, we've got this 1.64 million dollar difference on enterprise funds that you're saying, I think I'm hearing you say that's the big concern right now, right?
On the enterprise.
Yeah. So, like, how, what are we going to, what are we doing? I don't know, like, you made it sound like we could kind of pass a budget that had this difference on the general revenue fund. Like, can you put this in context of like, do we have to do something or what happens if we do nothing?
Do you want to go back to the chart about the projections? So, yeah, we're not making a decision about these enterprise fund increases.
Which, which chart with the projections?
Where you talked about like, yeah, what we would do moving forward.
All right, so to answer your question very directly, we have to consider, we have to pass some reciprocal tax credit adjustment. Our general fund revenues are not sustainable for the level of service that we want to deliver. That's on the general fund.
Okay, so just to be super clear, so you're saying here today?
Yes.
That the only way to make this budget work is if we pass a reciprocal tax?
In 2023, we can get away with spending this 3,000, 3,000-plus deficit. We can get away with 2023. 2024, we can't.
Sorry, just make sure you're saying, you're saying this, you can make this number go away by spending on reserves in the short term? I just, this idea of like, you have to pass a reciprocal tax? This is what I'm saying is like, if that's the case, we shouldn't, I mean, I understand we've talked about reciprocal tax, but if it's a, you have to do it now.
Okay.
I don't like that. If it's a next year, and I, that's what, I've been under the impression is we have a structurally unbalanced budget and that we're going to have to make changes between now and next year. That's very different than staring at 1.6 million, 1.6 million dollars and trying to figure out what do we have to do legally, et cetera?
Yeah, so, I stand by my comment at the last. I'm sorry, that, my computer is hooked into my phone.
A little musical interlude here.
Yeah, it was pleasant. Everybody take a breath.
I need to, do not disturb for till tomorrow. I'm sorry about this, I don't. Okay.
I understand.
All right.
Okay, the general fund, same comment as I did at the last budget meeting. We can absorb a $300,000 deficit in the general fund for two reasons. The reserves that we're using does not get us below the 90-day reserve, one. Two, we are conservative in our budget, so as we go in through the end of the year process, we're closing POs, we're going to, we're going to have a better cash reserves than what we're projecting right now because we need to end the year, we're going to close POs and we're going to underspend than what we were planning to spend. So we're going to close some of that gap. Is it going to, is it going to completely close?
I understand, I'm asking about the enterprise fund.
The enterprise, no, we cannot pass.
So what happens if we don't, what do we have to do, like right now?
For water, for water and electric, two things need to happen. One of two things need to happen, council adjusts rates or I need to cut that budget. And when I say I need to cut the budget, I don't know if it was you or Brian who asked me at the last budget meeting, what are you going to do if we don't give you revenues or something along the line? I have to cut a budget, we need to, we need to be fiscally responsive. And Amy came up here because.
Can't say anything.
Right. So, Amy.
Okay, Gavin, it's a $3 million deficit overall, okay? We know, we have to work on that. Housway and I spent two hours today saying, what aren't we going to do? What aren't we going to do, what's not essential? So the enterprise funds, the way you get through that 1.6 million dollars is you don't do things.
Sure.
Okay? You raise rates, it's not today, it's not 2023, but it's definitely 2024. We can deficit spend for a year, you can live off your savings, right? If you lose your job, you can live off your savings for a year, but you can't do it for five years.
Sure.
That's where we are right now. So, I think there's a lot of room for improvement. We can, the overpayment fund, $234,000, we can get back in those enterprise funds. We just have to sit down and pick through each one of those accounts, it's going to take a couple months.
Totally understand. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand the picture, which is, I think, so what I'm hearing is, we can do, we could pass this right now and we're, we're going to be fiscally solvent. It's not like something's going to close or something, like we can do this, it's just, we can't do it forever. We have a line that we're going to, that we're going to cross and that is most notably going to be, it sounds like, at the end of '23?
I haven't.
At the latest, at least on these general revenue fund numbers, that's the way you've described it before, right? I think I get it, I'm just trying to understand, how, how much do we need to act? And how, like, how big and how fast? That's all.
Well, it's my understanding, and I think Housway is saying that we should be raising the utility rates in 2023.
Yes.
Yes.
Start doing that.
Start to, yep.
Yeah, I think maybe the confusion is, you know, this memo was designed to highlight the challenges that we have moving forward. And so I think, I feel like it's gotten a little bit confused with the budget that we need to pass, I think by the end of the year. And, and so I think related to that, I mean, and, and I appreciate the responsiveness to that because that's what council, I think, asked for, is we need a reality check because we've kind of been like going along. But again, like, these things around utility increases, those are not part of this budget process. That is not happening in December. So, so I think it's important that we distinguish that. I'll also say as a side note, we've never gotten a memo like this before. I appreciate it personally, but, you know, just kind of to some of the prior comments, basically all we got was like a spreadsheet, we walked through it line by line. So, there is this goal to try to, you know, dig a little bit deeper. And so, and that's new to all of us, actually, so. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. All right, so, all right. We're kind of like, coming on that like hour that we talked about spending. Carmen, you haven't really had a chance to ask any questions or say anything, anything that you want to?
I'm just kind of following up on what Kevin was talking about with the recs and like philosophical differences we arbitrage for those.
Carmen.
Oh, sorry.
The bag is waving.
If that's something that, that we would be interested in, then I would like to see whatever revenue that can be gained from that going right into our public works department, and that's it. That's, I mean, so there's, there's a lot going on, but I was thinking about, you know, was thinking about that. But I'm also interested in what Mary Ann said in the beginning was that I think that another, another quick couple-hour work session, even though we all have other things to do, would benefit the body greatly.
Yeah, so, I appreciate that we're talking about the rec policy and Mary Ann had mentioned that too. I mean, actually, that's something that I wish we had done months ago. But, but yeah, we need to come back to that. I'm okay with another work session. I will say, yes, we have gotten documents, not as timely as we would like, but also, there needs to be clarity from council members about what they want. All right, you know, so, and I mean, I guess I will emphasize that, you know, in the past, for better or worse, council members typically went to the village manager and the finance director, asked all their questions and whatever. I love it being discussed in public, but, you know, I think we need to give some direction about what we need. So, so, and we don't need to like, you know, figure that out here, but we need to like send that to Housway so that whatever is lingering for folks gets unlingered, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, I'm happy to follow up, but just, just so everybody understands, we got this yesterday and we're doing our best to respond. The idea that we're not communicating, I don't, I just don't want there to be any, I don't, I don't know, I can't speak for everybody else, I guess. I just feel like I've asked questions every time I've gotten stuff, when I've gotten stuff, and I don't know how I could have asked earlier.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that. I, I just think, we have had budget spreadsheets for two months, you know, that have like evolved, so.
I mean, that's, no, we could get into it, that's barely accurate. We had some stuff at the beginning, we had stuff at, we had stuff, we had, this is the, before this packet, we had a full set of information, but we haven't seen those budgets updated since we got them for the first, for the first work session we were here. And in between, there's no comparison between the two, so I'd have to print out 65 pages of documents and set them side by sides. I just, look, it is, we are where we are, I get what you're saying. I just, I don't, I feel like we need to have a reasonable conversation about, about what has happened so that we don't do it again. So, and I'm not, I'm just saying, I don't want to take responsibility for what we could not reasonably have been expected to process, that's all.
Can I, can I just make a comment that I think would be helpful? It's helpful when council formally moves for a certain thing to happen because things can get a little bit lost and kind of as you get, head into the end of a meeting. I definitely heard from different council folks, we'd like you to explore additional positions for public works, we'd like to see salary equity, we'd like to see, there were a number of suggestions made. And I think, you know, what Housway is trying to do is respond to those, but I don't know that everyone heard and thought the same thing about what each of those meant. And so, it's, I think, really helpful. If council can sort of stop and say, wait, I'm making a motion that the budget you bring back includes two more positions for Johnny, includes very, fairly specifically. Because, I mean, it's all interpretation and communication that's kind of going back and forth in a general sense, in a workshop setting. And then, he's got to prepare this, this hard and fast budget. So, you know, that said, I guess my suggestion would be if you do have a work session, that it's that goal directed, where, where are the pressure points? I don't understand this and I didn't want that. I make a motion that that get taken out and this get put, that it's fairly specific as best you can do with the information that you've got. And if you don't feel that you've got the information to do that, then that's, that's an ask that should happen. You should be able to understand that before you make a motion. I'm just saying, I think there's a little confusion coming both directions.
So, I would suggest to get everyone all the information they need. We have that work session and. We have that work session and each council member schedule time with Amy and myself to address whatever questions you have. And you get the two people that are gonna have the information. I would also like, if you want to do a deeper dive in PD budget or public works department budgets to get a better understanding of what's in there and what's not in there, I will bring those team members to the meeting with you. If you wanna, so we don't violate, we can't violate sunshine rules, so you're limited to have two. So if you wanna, I'm, I'm offering one-on-one sessions. If two of you want to be in, in, in those meetings, two of you can come at two separate meetings. You each get devoted time just for you from all the individuals that have all the information.
So here, here's my recommendation. This is what I would like. I would like a complete budget, all the line items, all the stuff. I would like to have it compared to, I guess, the last two years budgets. Any, every place there has been a change from when the original budget was made to the next one, I'd like that noted. I'd like comments saying, well, like, sort of like Johnny has it for, for his budget. And I'd like to get that a week before whatever workshop we have so that I have time to look at it, see what questions I have and make a time for an appointment. Because it's the thing about getting the information the day before is one of the drivers of pulling out hair. And I don't have a lot.
Okay.
You have more than most.
I think you got more than me. I'm losing some. Okay. Good thing is that full detail budget, that's been prepared. The things that change on the, on the full detail budget, that's included in your page, starting page 43, is that full detail budget. That's every line item by line item expense. And there's the two-year data on there. So what's not on there is small changes that happen that some are, are things that they just, some changes happen. For example, today, Amy and I review compensation, workers' compensation and what changes we need to do. Those are things, numbers are changing that you're not gonna see those, us notate those changes because we're just keeping up with, with those invoices or cost estimates. The things that we, we certainly include notations on are the things that are discretionary spending or things that we have some control over. One of the questions from Mary Ann was, how much are we paying for HR external services? So we'll notate, notate those things. But your, your primary request of that budget, of the full detail budget, you have that now. That budget isn't gonna go up. It's only gonna go down. And we'll annotate those changes ahead of our meetings.
Okay. So John, you have something quick to add? Because again, we're gonna be talking about budget a lot more. So.
Just, just at the next thing here. Are there gonna be three? It's just two, right? Okay, cool. So, about, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me.
I just, I can see her wincing from here. So it's.
So, well, tall people can lean down. So Matt Raska and about two other, two, two dozen other people signed his letter calling on council to cut instead of increase the police budget. Of course, I guess if council expresses that, that that's a direction that they want to go to, Hosway, as you're saying, you want to hear from council what direction they want to go. And that could, I guess, help you in shaping the next numbers that you bring before council. That's, that was, that was really the main reason that I came up here. Does seem like a 20% increase between 2021 and 2022 seems pretty significant, although I know there's been inflation. I guess I should say that the, our police department's budget is far larger than other communities of our size. It's about three times as large as the Cedarville Police Department's budget. I think that part of the contributing factors to that are that Cedarville doesn't have their own dispatch. They just use the county dispatcher. And they usually just have one police officer on call at, at, at any given time. And good luck, my friends.
All right. Thanks, John. Yeah, lots of other differences with Cedarville, like no bars, but yeah. Okay, so I.
Brian, do you want to, we know that Officer Chief Burge has given us a couple of different presentations. And one, we know expressly, explicitly was recorded and it's out there on YouTube. So if we want to maybe direct folks who, who are concerned about the justifications offered for the, for the police department budget.
Yep. And I think that's, yeah, I mentioned that in announcements and it's great to mention it again, that that's on YouTube. And in fact, we can promote it on our Facebook page too. Like, make sure that people like find that link easily. Okay, so I'm gonna suggest that Judy contacts us.
I will say y'all are about out of time.
Yep, I agree.
You don't have much time in the whole, a week ahead would be just about in two days or three. So, I mean, you've got, you've got the next reading on the 19th. So I don't know how long it will take Hosway to do anything extra. And then folks to have meetings, individual meetings scheduled.
Do we have to pass budget in this calendar year?
Yes, we need, we need some, we need some budget approved to spend.
I mean, in the past, when we, when Brian and I first got on council, that didn't happen.
Right. There was, at one point, there was a budget that was approved in March.
Right.
But technically, I don't have any spending authority without an approved budget come January 1. So.
So, I mean, I'm cognizant of the holidays and that no one wants to have extra meetings. Is it possible to pass an interim budget?
Yes, we can pass a, a base budget, something that covers just essential activities. So wages, no adjustments of, so let's say no COLA increases. Or if you want to consider a COLA increase in this budget, you still have to approve that as a separate item anyway. So we can pass a budget that is just the essentials.
I see someone just shaking her head.
I really believe we need to pass this budget in December. If you want us to clean up and get things back in order, we're already trying to do some of that. But if we don't have a budget loaded by January 1, it's gonna be quite difficult to, to move on to the next project. Cause we could draw this out till March and I'm not gonna get to the overpayments then. So I think we just need to bite the bullet and do it. You have permission and opportunity to change your mind mid-year through supplementals and other things like that. So if something changes, it comes back to you and the budget gets modified and gets sent to the county. So there's opportunity throughout the year to make changes. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So Judy's gonna reach out to folks to schedule a, another work session next week. And, yep, we'll keep on moving forward. I would imagine, honestly, most of the data that people are asking for is already there. Especially like what Mary Ann mentioned, the year-on-year stuff and all that. So we just need to package it appropriately. Okay. All right. So I think we are gonna move to citizen concerns. This is the time on the agenda where we'll entertain comments up to three minutes about anything that's not an agenda item. Do we have any citizen concerns? All right. Looks like Jonphy has one.
So it's gonna be kind of quick. I got two, I have two. I'm Jonphy Jammer, Global Citizen. I'm a globalist. 118, 1118 Livermore. That's for Hosway. He's gonna send that protocol to me, to my address, right? About my banner that you denied me.
Well, I didn't deny it and deny it, but I committed to sending you a response and you gave me a deadline, I believe, December 15th?
Yeah. I'll, I'll hold my breath.
Okay.
I kid, I kid. He doesn't like my, the way I politic him, but I kid Hosway. So real quick, I have two concerns. One is CRB and one is, I'll, I'll call it, the villages supportive events that are not diverse and inclusive. I'm gonna cover CRB quick, quick here because it's a more urgent nature. And I don't want it to be forgotten because it takes the backseat of what's going on now. And then in January, I'll take the backseat of this. But this, like I said in my original meeting for justice equity, I speak for all black and brown people, not just in the village, but in the world who understand this is of an existential nature. I don't speak for Negroes who, who don't want anything to do with this and are, and actually hurt this mission. But it's my understanding that this has been slow balling. The money's been approved for the review. And I have, from the inside, someone who would know that, it's just, Mr. Wise has been hit with like procedural minutia, you know, and by you Hosway specifically, why this isn't moving forward. Should have already, you know, he should, he should have already had the monies and he should be reviewed. It should be reviewed already. My, my concern is, Village, based on past history, on how this was initially attacked by council, is that you're trying to take out the independent investigative part of it. You're just kind of throwing this procedural minutia, trying to get, so that way there's no consequences where something happens. I have no, I doubt any of Page's officers would do anything ill. But we don't know what's inside people's minds. And this is of an existential, so we need something in place. And a CRB without independent investigative committee is not worth the paper it's on. We don't need something to happen. If it does happen, and we go, well, we need something in place to have, you know, consequences and repercussions.
That's three minutes, Jonphy?
No, we need, we need to know. Cause I have to report back to the committee who made this proposal, what's happening. I need to know what's.
Yep. So we'll, we'll add an update. So, yeah, and.
How, how will I get the word so I can report back to the committee?
So we'll put an update on the next meeting. So.
I'll have an update on my manager's report.
Okay, cool.
And, and don't support things openly that aren't inclusive and diverse.
All right. Thanks, Jonphy. All right. Any other citizen concerns? Okay. So we're gonna move into, we have no special reports, so I think it's the manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Brian. I want to start off with a couple of things that are not included in the manager's report, and they're primarily updates that have happened recently. I did report that our stormwater project began on December 1st. We are repairing the stormwater pipes that is in the glands. We had an inspection from ODOT. So you might see that, that equipment in the glands. TLT has been informed, they were informed months ago of the work. I actually took Gavin through a tour of that space, of that work that we needed to be done. So that, that work is underway. So citizens may approach you, what's going on? You know, that we're fixing the, a broken stormwater pipe that's there that's causing erosion. And that's work that, it is essential that we do. So that's happening. The school board meeting, Brian, you, you brought this up in your announcements. And I have a plan on doing a verbal because I didn't include in the, in the, in the report. But the next step, since we have ruled out that this building is not the most suitable space for the entrepreneurship center, we are now going, moving forward into the leasing options. So we're gonna put together a criteria for leasing the space. As I do that, I would like, if council has any input or any feedback, please don't hesitate to reach out to me with any thoughts or concerns you have. One of the things that we're prioritizing is in collecting revenue on the building, someone finding a tenant that would make improvements and that it fits well with the downtown ecosystem. So folks that have approached us, museum type or historical society type space, retail space for whether pastries or other things that do not require cooking onsite. As you know, the building is, i- it's historic and it's made out of stone, so it has limitations on the uses. So depending on the interest that we have, I'm going to connect with my team, primarily Denise, Johnny and, and our solicitor about the potential uses of the space. So we're, we're entering into the leasing options of that space. The EV chargers, our EV chargers are broken and they require immediate replacement. They're broadly broke. So we wanna, we wanna, we need to replace them. We have a proposal to council. I haven't written it up, but I want to bring it to the next meeting. And that is essentially that the enterprise, the electric enterprise buys the charger, installs them, and we adjust, we implement a pay-to-charge model where we cover the cost of those, of those chargers. Because the electric enterprise is making that investment and the electric price is gonna be a leader in any green revolution EV charging system that we implement in the future, the revenues collected from the pay-to-charge should go to the electric enterprise to cover its investment costs and collect revenue that could be reinvested in future expansion of EV chargers. So we want to bring that back. I want to take a pulse or gauge an interest on where you are on that so we can bring that back. That allows us to just get the ball rolling on this and replace those EV chargers. So, all right. I see a lot ahead of me. Thank you. So that's the, the updates that I have. The rest of the, the information is in my manager's report. I'm excited that we received the audit feedback. Included in some manager's report. And today, you all should have received an email directly from the state auditors with the link to the relevant files. If you did not, please let me know and I will make sure that you are included in the state auditor's communication because as council members, you get that communication directly from the state auditors. So let me know if you didn't get that email and I make sure you get that email and you're included in future distributions. Along with that, there's been, previously, there were questions about what the audit entails or didn't entail, what was uncovered and whatnot. Unfortunately, in this auditor, in this, in this certification by the state auditors, what they essentially did is they certified that our audit was correct. And there's no notes to anything else. Amy Blankenship and I discussed it briefly today. And other than to tell you that we got a clean audit with those notes that are included in there, that's all that we have. So, and I don't know that we'll get any report from the special audit team or anyone else. So.
Now, so this audit done by the state was because there was some complaint. Am I correct? It's not something we have every year or do we?
No, this was the annual audit, but it was held back until the special investigation like cleared us.
Okay, so it wasn't done by the state. It was done by whoever we have.
Correct. So, so through the state, we hire an independent auditor that gets approved by the state. That audit gets completed and sent to the state. The state, the state essentially reviews the work and certifies it, whether it's correct or not. We did have a separate audit, and that is the special audit that was done. We're not purviewed to their conclusions and what was discovered wasn't discovered. I, Amy's gonna, we're gonna coordinate a, a follow-up with the state auditor. But what I've been advised is expect nothing from them because they're not required to provide anything unless there are particular findings that require actions, whether that's a finding for recovery or anything else. Did I miss anything, Amy? So.
But the fact that our audit went through means there are no implications from the special audit.
That's, that's my understanding. Yes. Right. Because they held it up subject to their review and.
Right.
So, but. Right. Right. So if there's anything that's gonna come out of that special audit, it's not gonna be, it's, right now, it isn't part of the annual audit that the state has certified.
Okay. I just want to be clear that whatever we do with the former school administration building allows for collaboration around potentially restrooms. We've talked about having downtown bike parking and other things. So I want to make sure we don't lock ourselves into not being able to do some of those things.
Right.
So. Okay. Any questions for Hosway? Okay, any questions for Husway?
No, I would just say great news on the audit.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, um, so we got old business, one finance committee item. And this was something that we learned when we met with the director of Rita. And that is that. It's no longer about pretending that people are working in Columbus when they're working from home. And so Rita themselves have initiated, they've got like a two days at the office, three days at home and they parcel out the local in- income tax in that way. So forty percent of the income tax goes to where the Rita office is, sixty percent goes to where they're working. What we have learned is that there's a basically a three year, you know, ability to claim a tax refund. So let's say you're a friend of mine that used to work at OSU and for the two years during the pandemic, you worked from home. You could get a one percent refund because Columbus's income tax rate is 2.5%. And then the 1.5% that would go to Yellow Springs would be allocated that way. Moving forward, folks can also make it clear to their employer that they want their, if they're working from home, to pay in the locality where they live. So again, if we've got folks that used to work in Columbus but now work from home, they could pay a lower tax rate and also support village services. So. One of the things that Husway has mentioned to us before and it's gonna be talked about, I assume you've got your presentation ready for Wednesday, related to the reciprocal tax is that many other municipalities have a higher rate than ours. So I think there's kind of two aspects to this. So one is, we want to make sure that people knew, you know, what the standard is and if they have a refund owed to them. And then secondly, you know, it kind of relates to, if you're working from home now, you can make it clear that you should be paying income tax in Yellow Springs and Rita will help facilitate that.
Yes, and Brian, word has gone out, I got a report on Friday from Rita that we had residents filed a work from home refund and they received fourteen thousand dollars back. That is the difference between what they're gonna pay us and what they're gonna get to keep or save in taxes by doing a, a work from home refund. Overall, we also got a report from Rita on what's happening at the state level. And for 2021, there were a total of six thousand nine hundred and six work from home refunds filed totaling thirteen point three million dollars. That's revenue that is going back to those residents for working from home and some of that revenue is shared with the home municipality.
Great. Okay, questions? All right. Oh, we have another old business. Oh yeah, public safety update or debrief.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that we had a public safety philosophy work session, it's available on YouTube. And I said that I would report back about next steps and I plan to do that at our next meeting. I said I would do it at our next meeting, but that was today and that only gave me no time, so at the coming meeting.
Cool.
Yeah, so if anybody has any feedback, obviously, keep it coming. My hope will be to make some suggestions that are relevant from our conversation.
All right, and yeah, thanks again for your work on that Gavin. And thank you chief. Okay. New business, I think, planning and zoning fees.
Oh yes. All right, so one of the things that we have been evaluating us, where are we falling short on collecting revenue that we should be collecting? So council jumped right into the, into the trenches with us on updating our tap fees. And back then, we also said, hey, we also have to adjust our planning and zoning fees. And so Denise and her team looked at all the public information that's available about fees in the surrounding area. A table has been included for your review. And based on that research, we are proposing to adjust the planning and zoning fees. Part of the research that we done, as you know, we try to be diligent in our research and try to meet at least where the averages are. And so any recommendations we make is, is based on the research, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, we were very low, we're very low in our planning or zoning fees. And I think that that spreadsheet kind of tells it all, how low we are compared to other communities. So it's, I think it's long overdue. I know that I just collected on the first increased tap fees that you okayed a couple of months ago and the contractor didn't blink an eye, so.
In perspective, what was the difference Denise?
It used to be sixteen hundred dollars, it's now sixty one hundred dollars. And didn't think anything of it, because that's how low we were on tap fees. So anyway.
So thank you council for supporting that and we hope you can support us on planning and zoning fees.
Indeed, yeah. Yeah, I've, I've been waiting, so yeah, thank you.
So that will come when, to our next meeting?
We would have to do it in January because of the, of the hearing requirement, sorry Judy.
No, 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 you're fine.
It's an ordinance.
January, because you can't carry an ordinance over years.
Okay, questions? All right.
What about the water and?
Yeah, that's the next one, but yeah, but yeah, I mean, I think in terms of planning and zoning, it's kind of a no brainer. The next one, not so much, but yes, let's talk about utilities.
I've included a memo and I, I, I hope that you guys, the work, the hard work that we put into managing costs, looking for cost savings during my time here, but Johnny has been at it for much longer than I have with less support. I hope that that work is appreciated. We've tried meeting, getting at all the efficiency out of our systems. We've done all that we could do, there are economic forces that we just can't control. Just our chemical cost has gone up, those are things that we just can't control, we can't use less chemical to treat our water. You do not want us using less chemicals to treat our water. So we just have to combat the economic forces that are out of control and what we have is rate increases. So you heard from, from Courtney and Associates cover the deficits on all the three different utilities a couple, a couple of weeks ago. This recommendation is a five year recommendation to help bring in, bring us up to those revenue targets as recommended by the, by the consultants over a five year period. That way we don't, we don't load these expenses on our residents all at once. We face them in over multiple years. And then for years beyond that, I think we need to have a minimum, a small charge or increases over years to try to keep up with inflation. And inflation, I also included an inflation chart, is two years of high inflation rates that, yeah, that's been difficult to deal with, so. That's the recommendation for, for what is the impact? We're, we're, the numbers that we based are on Courtney and Associates' numbers. The, the numbers tie back to the deficits that Courtney and Associates identify and those are included in the presentation. And I'm happy to work up the numbers on an individual level year by year on what those increases would be. I thought about the percentages, doing it simple just because, for me, it made it easier to illustrate the point that we need to increase them over the next five years. But we can certainly follow up with the magnitude, what does it mean on dollars and cents for those fees? Additionally, in addition to the consumption fee, there are readiness for service charges that we need to adjust, these readiness for service charges, they haven't been modified for many years. For water, we went, we went back to 2012 and I think Courtney and Associates made a, made a point that said your readiness for service fees haven't been adjusted in a long time. So we're proposing also to adjust that. We're looking at what surrounding utilities are charging for readiness for service and delivery charges. Just over the last week and over the weekend, Johnny and I got together on, on AES, we're constantly compared with AES. And certainly our rates are comparable to AES in the area. They're making more, they're charging more than we are and we have significantly better service than AES. So just to put that in perspective, we, we, with the exception of water, I think we're clear that water is a higher rate than we would want it to be, higher than surrounding area or other enterprises are, are doing a lot better. Any information I can provide is something that we're gonna queue up in the beginning of the year, but we needed to come back to council post according to Associates' presentation on what we're thinking regards our utility rate adjustment recommendation. Anything that you would like to see as we prep this work for January?
Yep.
Yeah, so just, so like take water, it, that's, you know, you add ten plus ten, you know, ten, five times you get fifty and it was a forty one percent, you know, suggestion. So I'm assuming that that's just like building in inflation or something like.
Yeah, so the, that twenty twenty seven rate, I've adjusted that, I'm sorry, I meant to have that be a two percent. So, yeah, so it's a two percent.
And then what about electric, it adds up to thirteen versus a recommendation of six?
Yeah, so the five percent in twenty twenty three bring us close to the, to the one year adjusted rate and then the two percent year to years to keep up with inflation.
So that's just an inflationary number, okay. Yeah, I mean, I, generally, I haven't heard anything that indicates other than that we need to raise our rates to pay for what it costs to do it. And obviously you'd rather not have to do it, but it sounds like we need to do it. The only other thing would be like, it'd be great, I guess, to see sort of average customer impact. Like what's, what does this mean for a bill?
Yes. We, we, we did some of that analysis. We'll, we'll bring some of those examples of what the actual impact is on real bills, not just the arithmetic and how it plays out, but we'll take some of our bills and draw up examples.
How long would it take to generate that?
Well Johnny went through all my bills and we did it on all my bills, all my personal bills just, and then we picked others, so. All right, well, we're planning for beginning of January, so that's.
Okay, well, so we need to talk about this at least, you know, to some extent on Wednesday. But that doesn't mean that we have to have those figures ready to go. Okay.
And just, I'm throwing it out there, but if you think it would be a good idea to do a town hall on it, it's, it's a lot of stuff.
It is.
It's a lot of financial stuff and I feel like if people could call in and say, well, if I'm paying this, what does that mean? What does it mean if I have this or that? Because I think that helps to alleviate or not, levels of anxiety for folks who are just trying to figure out, what is this gonna mean if I only make X amount of money? So I might throw that out, out there as a suggestion, because it's, it's one thing to just get something in your utility bill or hear it on council, but it's another to be able to just ask, but what about me, what about this amount?
Yes, and so actually, if we could come up with a date for the town hall, maybe between our first and second meeting in January and announce that on Wednesday as well, I think that would be appropriate, but I agree. I feel like we did that before, when, yeah, we talked about utility rates. Okay, anything else? All right, then I think we're talking about future agenda items, so Gavin gave us one, public safety work session debrief.
Could I have, would it make sense if we have the town hall talk about the reciprocal tax?
I think those could come together.
I mean, maybe even a sort of general thing about these are the increased expenses, these are the.
Yeah.
Things we're looking at.
I think it makes sense to.
Well, only, I mean.
Well, I'm just putting it out there, we can.
But I would imagine people would have questions in that context anyway, so we should be prepared for it, so.
So I've got, I, I thought I heard resolution for the chief of police for an eighty hour carryover as opposed to her current forty hour carryover of vacation time.
Yes.
That brings everybody in. And what you're looking at, there is no first reading for the personal policy manual, that, because we can't do the jump over from one year to the next. And then I got a lot of stuff lining up for next year, but not, not yet, not for the nineteenth.
Yep, okay, and then Gigi's gonna reach out about a, another budget work session before our next meeting on the nineteenth. So, okay, anything else, yeah Gavin?
Well, just checking in, we had talked about doing a housing work session at some point and I feel like it'd be good. I know we didn't want to add any more this year, but it does feel like it'd be a good thing to start getting on the calendar for early next year.
You guys also need a retreat, so maybe I'll just kind of lay it all on you like a big wet blanket for general times and here's all the stuff you're gonna have to start scheduling for next year so you can.
And just start here and before now. We were gonna do some workshop on, or work session on commissions, I think, committees, but that would be.
Yeah, the committee on committees, yes.
The group hasn't even met yet, so.
Yep, and, and if we're just trying to throw out stuff, I don't know, I don't know how soon it'll be, or when it's appropriate to talk about the whole arbitrage thing and, and I would thank Carmen for reminding me about, you know, the, the revenue from the recs going directly to, to public works. What I'm alluding to though is those funds could offset any other transfers in that we could use for something else. So it, I, let's talk about the, get the weeds later.
Okay, right, well, and also, so I think that, my understanding was that PCFO could help us with rec policy. And so I don't know if like, that's something that environmental commission wants to talk about and then start to get that.
Well, I had talked to Husway and I've talked to you Brian, about having a set of goals that fit into climate action. And one is about renewable energy and one would be about rec policy.
Cool.
And I've, I made a draft, I'm gonna pass it around to you and Husway.
Okay, anything else? All right, well again, Kevin Stokes, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Hope you get to celebrate a little bit.
Yeah.
But I heard from Karen Winter that you were in your favorite place for your birthday today, so yes, all right. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, all right.
All right, have a good night.